Order the city council regular meeting of November 3rd, 2014, and ask those who'd like to join the, myself and the council in the pledge allegiance, to please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item under special business this evening is Agenda Bill 6926, King Conservation District Proposed 2015 Work Program. And we have Melissa Lang here this evening, who is going to present a little bit on just what the King County Conservation District does, and a report on a 15-month planning process that has identified some changes that might be in store for us. So Melissa, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us to come and speak. We really appreciate the support that we've received from the City of Issaquah. Mary Lou Polly is on our advisory committee, and then Tola Martz is on the sound, am I not?
We can make sure that you're sound.
Okay.
We can move the microphone if you're not, where you're comfortable.
Okay. And then Tola Martz is on the Sound Cities Association Pick Committee, and they voted to approve our program of work back in July. So as you said, this has been a 15-month process that's about to come to fruition. We found out Friday afternoon, about 4:30, that the ordinance that includes our program of work and rate for 2015 going forward was put before the budget committee this morning. So Dave Up the Grove has sponsored it. It went before the committee, and in two weeks from today, on the 17th, they will be having a public hearing and a vote on that. So we are the, the end is in sight, we're hoping. So this process began, as you said, about 15 months ago, when King County asked us to convene two complementary roundtables committees, the Conservation Panel and the Task Force. And the purpose was to look at natural resource needs and the existing programs that were within King County. And they had identified 100 needs, and of those 100, they prioritized the top six that the King Conservation District was particularly equipped to address. And then KCD was tasked to create a working advisory committee to develop a proposal that we could then submit to the King County Council by August 1st. So working with that advisory committee, and I'm sure Mary Lou could attest to this, it was a very well-run group of people, consisting of elected officials and senior policy staff. There were King County reps, there were City of Seattle and City Bellevue reps, there were Sound City Association reps, and then also rural and urban landowners, as well as people on the committee who were representing Equity and Social Justice and other related non-governmental agencies. This is a timeline of our meeting schedule, so you can see, it was a very robust committee. We were fortunate to have a group of people, and we called them the Willing and Able, that was the only qualifier, that worked on an executive committee, that were able to meet throughout the time and prepare docs to be able to put in front of the whole group. So it made the committee work much quicker, and we got quite a bit accomplished in a very short amount of time. So as I mentioned, we were tasked with this, with six natural resource priorities, and those have been boiled down to three general categories. So we are working around building a sustainable and equitable resilient regional food system. We are working to expand the region's green infrastructure on both private lands and in the rural areas and also in urban, so that we can increase the tree canopy. And then also to restore private shorelines and habitats along freshwater and streams and wetlands, as well as marine shoreline. So under the regional food system and sustainable agriculture, we are going to be working in a couple of different areas, primarily rural agriculture and urban agriculture. So we feel, in King County, farmers produce only $120 million of the $600 million of raw foods that are consumed in King County. It leaves a huge gap for us to be able to fill with local foods. So our goal will be to work with rural farmers, to make them more viable, and in that way, they are able to use those best practices for natural resource conservation. We want to work with them to address the obstacles for getting local food access by improving storage facilities, production and packing centers, and creating distribution and marketing opportunities. Additionally, working in the urban areas, we want to encourage people to grow food whenever and wherever they can, with, with challenges such as climate change, severe weather, the increased population we expect to see here in particularly King County, and just all the things that keep us from, the possible natural disasters that may keep us from being able to access food, we want to encourage people to be self-reliant and sustainable in their food practices. So through things like soil testing, to encourage people to know their soil fertility, that also helps with clean water issues also. We also are going to be working with forestry, on small lot forestry and urban tree canopy. We will have a program that will address rural farmers with five acres or less. King County has a great program that helps with rural landowners who have more than five acres of tree stand, will be working with less than that. And then also within the urban tree canopy, working with cities, working with Friends of groups, helping to maintain the trees that we have and add to them. There are a great number of benefits documented to show, increased property values, decreased crime rates, great health benefits in having a robust tree canopy in our cities. And the latest study through King Stat is showing a decrease in tree canopy in our lower-income areas. They're sitting at about 18%, while more economically viable communities are increasing, and they're at about 30% to 35%. And we have a very strong program already, where we're working with shoreline and riparian habitat. With our new budget, we'll be looking at doubling those efforts. Over two-thirds of King County marine and freshwater shoreline is privately owned, so it is very important for us to work with those private landowners through technical assistance, one-on-one, train-the-trainer programs, workshops, and classes. And we've already seen a huge number of people attend classes, and we want to be able to increase that. So the advisory committee recommended restoration of our legislative funding ceiling, and that goes straight to the people that you care the most about, to do the things that they care the most about, without jurisdictions needing to raise any money. So we know that you are tasked with huge regional needs, money's tight and unreliable, and residents want and need access to local healthy food, healthy forests and urban trees, and clean water. So what's next? So we are out talking to cities, finding out how our programs can match up with your comprehensive plans, your shoreline management plans, what, how can we work with you to do the best at providing the services that you, you find your citizens need? Also, we're asking, and I know it's in your pack, for a letter of support. As I said, we're looking at two weeks now until this long, arduous path is, is coming to a head, and as much support as we can get from cities and residents is much needed. When we submitted our package back in August, we had 61 letters of support. We're up to 74 now. And those came from various residents, people that have worked with us in the past, from cities, and from agencies and businesses, both rural and urban. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. In your packet, I wanted to let you know, there's a few things. There's just a one-page overview on the left side, and then behind that, you'll find a funding sheet. This is just a partial idea of the funding that has come to the City of Issaquah through your member jurisdictional grants, and some of the things that we've done. There is a copy of the PowerPoint. And then also, hot off the presses, literally, is our implementation plan. So this is taking that program of work, and this is what we will be doing going forth. So it's what I shared with you in considerably more detail, with some numbers.
Well, Melissa, thank you very, very much. Are there questions of Melissa at this time? This presentation, we will continue this agenda bill to regular business, where we will discuss the letter of support and your desire on whether to go forward with that or not. So Melissa, thank you very, very much. Our next item under special business is Agenda Bill 6924, Pancreatic Cancer Proclamation. And I would ask Councilmember Tola Martz to join me, along with Steve Lupper, for the proclamation.
Good evening.
Good evening. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, and is currently the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020, and whereas in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the U.S., and 39,590 will die from the disease, and approximately 880 deaths will occur in Washington State in 2014. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late-stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, with 94% of pancreatic cancer patients who die within the first five years. And whereas the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2013, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Issaquah and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research, funding, patient services, and public awareness, and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Issaquah are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim November 2014 to be Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. In the City of Issaquah, and I call upon all people to help spread the word, educate and learn about pancreatic cancer, and witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this third day of November 2014. Signed, Fred Butler, Mayor. Steve, thank you for calling this to our attention, and for all you do in support of, of dealing with this terrible cancer. And Tola, thank you for, also for expressing, you know, your support for this. For both of you, this is something that is very, very personal, as I understand it, and again, I'm delighted to be able to proclaim November as the National Pancreatic Cancer Month in our community. Steve, do you want to say a couple of words?
If you don't mind, thank you.
And then Tola, if you would, also.
Okay, I flung my notes somewhere. There we go. All right, thank you, Mayor Butler, and council members. This terrible disease has affected me personally, and I'll tell you about that in just a moment, but it's a disease that not a lot of people know about, hence the help that we're getting from the City of Issaquah. You know, we've heard of people like Steve Jobs, Patrick Swayze, people we didn't know, Luciano Pavarotti, and Dizzy Gillespie, all succumbed to this terrible disease. And there are, fortunately, some people still living with it. For example, Justice Ginsburg is surviving today with pancreatic cancer. But as an Issaquah resident and volunteer for the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, I just want to reiterate very quickly a couple of the points that the mayor has in the proclamation. Today, pancreatic cancer is the fourth-leading cause of cancer deaths in the U.S., and by 2020, it'll be the second-leading cause of cancer deaths. And you heard the numbers, over 46,000 people in the U.S. will be diagnosed, and 39,000 of those will die from the disease. 73% of people who are diagnosed with pancreatic cancer die within the first year of diagnosis. Only 6% survive five years or more. I told you I would make, tell you my personal connection. In 2007, actually, October 2007, my mother-in-law, Doty Norban, was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, and four months later, in February 2008, she died from pancreatic cancer, nine days after her 72nd, after her 73rd birthday. The good news is, there are people, like the City of Issaquah, doing things to help and to raise awareness and raise funds. As a matter of fact, yesterday, the sixth Purple Stride in Puget Sound, which is a pancreatic cancer walk, was held in Magnusson Park. My wife started the walk in 2009 here in Issaquah, not here in Issaquah, here in the Puget Sound area. Yesterday, we had over 2,000 people attend, and so far, it's raised over $320,000 for pancreatic cancer awareness. And then I'll give you my last personal connection, and then I'll let Councilman Martz add his. My best friend's mother, who also is in her early 70s, was diagnosed in March of this year, and went through a variety of experimental treatments, and then 24 days ago, seven months after being diagnosed, she lost her battle to pancreatic cancer. So again, thanks to the mayor, council, and the city for helping us raise awareness. I left you all with fact sheets and a purple wristband. You're welcome to wear that, and if you need more, don't hesitate to find me, I just live in the Highlands. So Councilman Martz.
Thank you. I just, just want to add a couple of comments. My mother was diagnosed in March of 2007. She was 62 years old, and she lived for about 14 months. She died May 8th of 2008, and I miss her every day. And I didn't know anything about pancreatic cancer. When she got sick, we had no history of cancer in our family. However, I will say, she smoked cigarettes. And about 50% of pancreatic cancers are attributed to smoking cigarettes. So the first and best thing you can do to not get pancreatic cancer is to not smoke cigarettes. But I miss her every day, and I'm so proud that we, as a city, are doing our part to help address this, this scourge that's just getting worse, unfortunately. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you both. We'll now move to audience comments. Citizens' comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, this is your opportunity to speak about any item or topics you believe are important to the city, to be aware of. In particular, tonight, I'd like to highlight Agenda Bill 6911, titled Acquisition of Bass and Bass Partnership and Reed Family Investments LLC Parcels on East Lake Sammamish Parkway. If you wish to speak regarding this item and its proposed motion to adopt the ordinance related to authorizing eminent domain action, this would be the time for you to do so. When recognized, please come to the lectern and speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. For example, resident, property owner, business owner. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Submit any written comments to the city clerk. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If a speaker is out of order, I will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat, and if the speaker does not comply, I will ask him or her to leave the council chambers. Again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And so, with that, has anyone signed up for audience comments?
Yes, I have several, starting with Dan Brevington.
Greetings to the council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a small business owner. I own an environmental firm, mostly doing watershed restoration, stream restoration, that kind of work, but also floodplain management-type solutions. And I came to you today, and I actually prepared a little brochure that I gave to the clerk that I think you have in your possession. And basically, that outlines a very interesting, effective, simple product that can alleviate a lot of the surface water flooding that our communities experience. And it can be used as a flood barrier system. It's a, you can use it to channelize flowing water as well. It's very strong. It's been tested by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. It has ANC rating. It has FM global, global approval. And again, I just think it's, it's something that most municipalities ought to consider in our area, because we have such a prevalence of, of surface water flooding. And it might be from a stream, it might be from impervious surfaces, there's a number of different reasons. And I just wanted to, I wanted to share this information with you, and I have my phone number there, if anyone's interested in contacting me. I will leave a copy of it out on the table for interested public, and we will be contacting the city engineer to talk with them directly. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Next.
Amy and Annika, are you presenting together? Thank you.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Butler. My name's Amy Lee. I'm a Sustainability Ambassador, representing Issaquah High School. Currently, I'm a senior. I live at 1045 First Place, Salsi, Issaquah, Washington, 98027.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Annika Kumar, and I am a seventh grader at Beaver Lake Middle School. And I'm a Sustainability Ambassador, and my address is 26322, Southeast 21st Place, Sammamish, Washington, 98075.
So we, as Sustainability Ambassadors, we are a professional development program for student leaders, aiming to initiate collective impact campaigns on sustainability at Issaquah. Our goal is to empower youth to catalyze community sustainability. So a couple of months ago, I presented here on the pilot of a sustainability summit, with the goal of joining different sectors and generations of the community together, like students, teachers, and local business representatives, in promoting sustainability at Issaquah as a group. Today, I'm here to report Part One of that program, the Green Team Kickoff, that we had on October 15th. All three high schools, as well as four middle schools, were represented at the kickoff. Maywood was not able to have any student representation, but their teacher advisor was there. The kickoff focuses on students and green teams at the middle and high schools in the Issaquah School District. The reason we do this is, from my personal experience, green teams at the, these levels in the school district, they generally have a strong passion for environment, but they don't really sometimes know how to effectively express that passion in, like, doing projects and communicating their projects. So for the kickoff, we hope to teach them some key strategies that we feel would help them better communicate and benchmark their progress as a green team, as a green team as a whole. So the three strategies that we used were, first, we taught them, we showed them the habit of setting an agenda and drafting a work plan to go with the agenda, to accomplish projects. And then we set up performance measurement guidelines and benchmarking tools to help them measure their, impact their projects have on their school. And the third is to communicate, to set up a communication strategy to report to their district and student body at their schools, so they could become more well-known, and then in general, become more active than they have been in the past. In addition to these strategies, we used two tools to help us, help the green teams establish the, to establish their work plans and agendas.
Okay. So thank you, Amy. And I'm going to talk about the two tools that we use to educate the kids. And the first tool was called the King County Green Schools Program. And the King County Green Schools Program contains three main levels. And Level One is about, all about waste reduction. And Level Two is all about energy conservation. And Level Three is all about water conservation. And so for every, for each level, like this checklist like, that I got here, for each level, there's this checklist for every action, and you can check off once you do each action to make sure that your green team is on task. And the second tool is the, is the three of your 26 city sustainability indicators. And this connects to King County Green Schools, because the first, the first indicator is all about waste, and it's reducing, it's reducing your waste, and this connects to Level One, because it's waste reduction. And the second indicator that connects is, is all about energy, and conserving our energy. And this connects to Level Two, which is energy conservation. And for the third indicator that connects is all about water, and it's about water, conserving your water. And this connects to Level Three of our program, because Level Three is all about water conservation. So these two tools, we are connecting these two tools for the first time, and to strengthen the middle and high school green teams, and to make, to make them more efficient. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Good night. Thank you both very, very much.
Ann Robertson.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Butler. My name is Ann Robertson, and I am also a Sustainability Ambassador representing Issaquah High School and the Issaquah School District. I live at 21629 Southeast 35th Street, Samamish, Washington, 98075. I was a co-leader of the Green Team Kickoff, and I will also be a co-leader of the future Sustainability Summit that we are planning to hold in April of 2015, this coming year. The Sustainability Summit is very similar to the Green Team Kickoff, but it will be on a larger scale. At the Green Team Kickoff, we had mostly the school sector represented, meaning mostly green team leaders and teachers and some school administrators. At the Sustainability Summit, we hope to have not only the school sector, but also city government, local businesses, and nonprofit organizations represented. At the kickoff, we mostly stressed -- we placed a large stress on data collection because we believe that that's a very important piece that is often missing in green teams and in sustainability measurement throughout the city. We believe that this data that we have stressed at the kickoff can be used at the Sustainability Summit to help us guide our interests in developing a collective impact project. The two main goals of the Sustainability Summit are first, to report data across sectors. For example, this 2013 Sustainable City Guide developed by the city of Issaquah has a ton of data that's very, very useful. And unfortunately, most students that I know, most students at Issaquah High School and throughout the district, don't know about how to use this data and what it really means. We believe that at the Sustainability Summit, it's very important to share that kind of data, both from the city to students and to businesses, and from schools to the city and vice versa. So, the second goal is to take that data and analyze the gaps, where we're missing what the areas that we haven't been placing a lot of effort. And once we understand where the gaps are, we can focus our efforts to develop a collective impact project. And what that means is that each sector, the school, city government, nonprofit organizations, and small businesses can all work together on a 12-month annual project to help increase community sustainability so that when we're all working together, we know that our efforts are a lot more effective than the sum of our parts. So what we would like to do is, we would like to invite one staff member and one council member to the summit in April because we really would appreciate city government representation. We believe that it's very important to have support from all sectors of the community, and we believe that we can make a really great impact this coming spring. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Joe Heslett.
Hi, I'm with the Issaquah Press. And as you know, I usually send reporters here to cover this, and I had some questions I would ask you tonight myself. But being unfamiliar with the forms, I signed the wrong one, so I'm going to hold off to the public hearing about the budget.
Okay.
Randy Bass.
Better point this thing in the right direction, I guess. Randy Bass, 871 Bentley Road, Ellensburg, Washington. And I represent the Bass Family Properties that you'll be talking -- that you'll be voting on tonight, taking part of our property for the road. And I guess it's a little bit about sustainability and survivability. I guess I'll talk about trying to survive, but these kids do a little better job than I do about talking about it all. But so I'd like to talk about the Agenda Bill and my concern for the Agenda Bill, which I know you need to pass. But my concern is the slope easement that's on it. And I have had a conversation with Shelton Lynn about this two, three months ago. And his memory might not be so good, but I remember the conversation. But anyway, and we did talk about it. My concern is how it's written in the bill, that it's not temporary. And, you know, there seems to be no sunsetting of it. It seems to be permanent, no way to get it removed in the bill, and I'm just concerned about that. In the original engineering plans, which I'm sure you all saw at one time or another, or parts of it, there was a retaining wall or a bulkhead the full length of East Lake Samamish, and which the sidewalk would be on, and so, you know, and I'd be giving 10 and 1/2 feet of land there. That bulkhead was either three foot high or four foot high, depending on the place in the plans. I like the fact that we're retaining the retaining wall in the north part of the property so I could be able to use that property until 62nd Street is built, which is the next phase The -- on 62nd Street, the sidewalks and bike paths and all that was moved from the south side of 62nd Street in the plans to the north side. And that took 4,000 more feet of my land, which, of course, I was not happy about. But this here will take -- the slope easement will take another nine feet, so that's 19 and 1/2 feet of land that I could lose. And of course, this will go on my title of my property, on my deed, that this slope easement will be on there. You know, if the city agrees, you know, in negotiations to mitigate the regrade in the surface water system that is impacted by both this condemnation or East Lake Samamish and the 62nd Street roads, then this slope easement may not be a problem for me. But right now, I have no idea. We have no agreements. We haven't really started to negotiate, and I don't know what that will produce in the future. I'm hoping it will produce good things. And, you know, nobody here wants an agreement with the city to succeed more than I do. And, you know, I'm going to work towards that. But negotiations really haven't started. You know, we kind of put some cards on the table, but, you know, we really don't know where that's going to go. It's kind of like we've roped the horse, but we haven't even saddled it yet, and we don't even know if it'll ride. So I'm kind of -- I'm back here and tell, you know, we put the saddle on the horse, and we hope that horse trots off just as nice as can be, like an old broken horse, but it may break into and buck. We don't know. I mean, I don't know. Maybe you all know. I don't know. Because we just haven't got that far down the road.
One minute.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyway, thank you for trying to put yourselves in my shoes, and I want to put -- try to understand the city's needs, and I want this all to work real good. Like I say, I want that horse to trot off and just be just fine, everybody happy. That's my goal, and it's the -- but I just have really concerns about the slope easement and -- because I don't really know where this is going. I mean, I have no idea yet. And hopefully, in the days and months or weeks ahead, we'll have some idea. Thank you very much.
Brad Book.
Hello, Mayor Butler and members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Brad Book, and I reside at 1040 Ridgewood Circle. I've been an Issaquah resident now for more than 30 years. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Lake Samamish State Park regarding our request for grant funding. I serve on the board, and I'm also the docent chair. I have a unique perspective of our overall park system in that I also serve on the Issaquah Park Board. I think we can all agree that Lake Samamish State Park is a valuable asset to our community. Even though Issaquah has over 20 dedicated parks and hundreds of open space acres, the state park offers many additional opportunities. It's well-balanced between sports and recreation, in addition to having substantial wetlands and natural wildlife habitat. Even though it's a regional park, it's essentially our community's connection to Lake Samamish. Given its proximity, the state park will play a significant environmental role as the Central Issaquah Plan moves forward and we develop the Green Necklace. The state park system has over 100 parks to care for, and the local staff do an excellent job operating with limited funds. Their efforts primarily focus on general operations. Our organization formed to promote and support their efforts and introduce additional initiatives to complement the park experience. We've developed an infrastructure, held a few events, and are working toward improved relations with state park management. In addition, we're developing partnerships with other agencies and nonprofit organizations. Our efforts go beyond just having events. Lake Samamish State Park is an excellent venue for environmental appreciation and outdoor education. Here are a few examples of our involvement in this area. This past year, I represented our Friends Group on the advisory panel for the Urban Wildlife Refuge Partnership. It's a federal initiative where U.S. Fish and Wildlife has identified the Lake Samamish watershed as one of eight regions in the country to focus attention toward habitat conservation to assist salmon populations. With nearly 7,000 feet of public waterfront access, it's likely the state park will play a significant role in the interpretive elements of this project. This year, we also partnered with King County in their Annual Salmon Season Initiative, which joins several locations around Puget Sound to provide a public viewing and education about salmon. Currently, a group of us are working on an interpretive native plant project to be introduced next year. With additional support, we can coordinate bringing in companies for a variety of outdoor educational experiences. Earlier this year, the Washington Park Foundation hired a consultant to identify economic tourist opportunities at certain key parks, and Lake Samamish State Park was included in that research. The consultant established several businesses that expressed interest in conducting activities and courses at the park. A few of those businesses include RAI Outdoor School, Cascade Bicycle Club, Nature Vision, Green Light Gardening, Justin Resnick Photography, and Art East. Last year, the legislature approved $3 million for capital improvements at the state park, and most of those projects are underway. We recently supported the state's mission for more than $2 million in additional grants to complete improvements at Sunset Beach. The state is moving forward to create a better park for the region, and the Issaquah community benefits from these improvements at no cost to the city. The city of Samamish has recently committed funding to support our mission to promote and support the state park. We asked the city of Issaquah to do the same. Our organization helps provide a bridge between the community and the state park. Additional funding will enable us to be a more successful advocate for Issaquah residents. This is an opportunity for the city of Issaquah to extend its hand of financial support toward a better partnership and help unify the interests of our community with state park objectives. Through potential annexation and our efforts, the cultural and historic significance of the park can once again be reconnected to the heritage of Issaquah. Thank you for your time and consideration. I have a copy of our brochure I'd like for all of you to have as well.
Thank you.
Rich Benson.
Mayor Butler and members of the Issaquah City Council. My name is Richard Benson. I'm the area manager at Lake Samamish State Park. I live at 2004 Northwest Samamish Road, which is actually in the park, not quite a part of the city at this point, but potentially so. My family and I have lived in that location for 30 years, so we look at Issaquah as home, and we love it dearly. So, anyway, I want to thank for this opportunity. I too am going to speak on behalf of the Friends of Lake Samamish State Park. I want to show that state parks is very supportive of what they've been doing. We support their request for additional funding for an executive director for the organization. They've only been around for about little less than two years, and in that time, they have really stepped up to help support and give good direction for our park. I know I talked to our agency, and they all seem to think, or have indicated to me, that they have had some, you know, some pretty good influence on our park. We've had some capital projects, as Brad has said. And honestly, you know, I've been at the park for 30 years, and for decades, there was no real capital money going into the park. It was not, you know, as a park ranger at the park, it was pretty disappointing. But in the last several years, we've gotten new -- we have a new boat launch docks. We have a new boardwalk. We have a new almost $3 million bathhouse going in. If permitting gets through here fairly quickly, and hopefully it will, we'll have a new beach down at Sunset Beach. We have a dock for that same beach, which is number one in a funding grant request. And so, we're very hopeful for that, as well as a capital project to redo the picnic area down there and shelters. So I think the agency is really looking at Lake Samamish with different eyes than they did before, and I'm very excited about that. I'm, you know, I'm getting close to the end of my career, and I'm really excited to see what's happening at the park. But state parks is looking to others to really kind of help us in this arrangement and making these sort of things happen. You know, partnerships have become a real key way for state parks to look to gather support. That's Friends Groups, that's, you know, partnering with cities like the city of Issaquah. We have an MOU with the city that's been in for the last couple of years to help do some good things for the state park. We are looking to be annexed, which I think would help us as well. We're discussing or working with event coordinators in the area in downtown Seattle to possibly promote some fairly large events that I think the city would really benefit from in the next couple of years. In this short period, as I mentioned, they've only been around for a couple of years. And in that period of time, as Brad has said, they've done a number of things. We've had several cleanup and maintenance projects. They've manned the booth at salmon days up in up at Samamish as well, some ribbon cutting events, Christmas light boat parade. They promote salmon viewing, as Brad is the representative on the Urban Wildlife Refuge. We have acquired funds for the design and permitting for a major new play structure like Big Toy down at Sunset Beach. And I think that will be an incredibly cool thing for the people who come and visit our park. As Brad says, we're creating a new native plant display, and they provide a written support for a couple more capital projects for the park. This is only -- this has been done with volunteer help, with very little money on their own. It's very much a shoestring operation. An executive director for this organization would really enhance the impact that they would have. Volunteer groups have a different perspective on things, and I think the agency and the decision-makers look at them in a different way than state parks employees when they propose things. They were the executive director, they're looking at providing fundraising opportunities, education programs, or enhance that. They can work with Mountains to Sound. They can work with Fish Hound at the Hatchery. We've done a number of programs with the local school district. They can enhance that. As Brad said, volunteer opportunities could be greatly enhanced, and they would -- they'd be the ones who probably could do some real interagency communications back and forth and increase the projects. Future for state parks, I believe, is the -- is with partnerships and with groups and cities and stuff that where the parks are located.
One minute remaining.
Okay. I think the list will have a very important influence on that. The park is willing to provide an office workspace for them, but they need money to be able to actually hire this person to make this sort of happen. So I hope that the Issaquah, the city council, will give that some serious consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Daniel Crum.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and members of the city council. My name is Daniel McCrum, and I live at 1960 Northwest Samamish Road in Issaquah, Washington. And I'm also here as a board member of Friends of Lake Samamish State Park to speak on their behalf. I'm here to encourage the city of Issaquah to give funding to support the hiring of a director for the Friends of Lake Samamish State Park. I feel this position would greatly benefit the park and the community. So I'd like to tell you a little story. Now, I was participating in a volunteer event at the park earlier this year, and we had parents parents and students from Issaquah High School and Issaquah Middle School. They were very energetic, and we were out there to pick up litter and clean up the park. We were working our way along a trail, and because of all that energy and excitement, we were working deep into the brush adjacent to the trail. And as we worked further to either side of the trail, we discovered a homeless encampment. Now, we went up there, we cleaned it up, and this area that we found this at is not only a heavily used area, but the trail is also heavily used by children. And so, in addition to cleaning up the garbage that we found, we also reported it to park staff, thereby helping them to monitor the activity in the park. Now, I have volunteered in the park on behalf of the Friends group several times, where we have, again, removed garbage, built picnic tables, removed non-native plants. Not only do volunteers help to make the park a more beautiful place to visit, they also help the park staff to protect the resources. Financial support from the City of Issaquah would help the Friends of Lake Samamish State Park to hire a director that would serve as a volunteer coordinator and be able to provide more consistent volunteer opportunities. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening who has not signed up? Mr. Kapler?
Good evening. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. First, I guess, the skateboard park, and then I'll get to Lake Samamish, but I kind of stayed out of that whole debate or whatever, but I could not figure out why the skateboard park was going to cost so much and be put by the transit center. Seems to me you want visibility for it, you want a place where kids are going to be, but you really want to have visibility where you got all the left turn, right turn movements and guaranteed traffic jam at least five days a week right in front of it in the prime time after school when kids would be there. They're not, you do not want the people on Newport or going out of the parking lot on the south or out of the transit center being some kind of eyes and ears on the skateboard park. You want them on task of driving safely. You know, the existing skateboard park, we put the prison yard fence around it, but unless the gate is regularly closed at night, open in the morning, and the holes in the fence are regularly repaired, it's a useless thing and just ugly. At least take the fence down at the existing park if you're going to keep it. There's a place at Issaquah Highlands where there is support that would work much better, I think, for a less expensive skateboard park if we're going to build and give, build one. On to Lake Samamish State Park. The Board of Lake Samamish State Park is interested in many, many areas or interests of the park. We've got a powerboat representative, the Commodore of the Lake Samamish Yacht Club. We've got people involved in the paddle sports there, the soccer people, environmental people, education people, Native American history or culture and those kinds of things. So, we've got a lot of things going. When I can remember coming from Magnolia in Seattle in the 1950s to come to Lake Samamish State Park, and it was really a cool place, and it can rise again. And if the city is going to annex that property, they need to show some real commitment to doing whatever they can to make it as good and great as it should be. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has not signed up desiring to speak this evening during audience comments? Anyone else? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak during audience comments? Seeing no one, then audience comments are closed, and we'll move now to committee and regional reports.
I'm sorry. Just a question first.
Yes, sir.
Art Jackson, Costco Wholesale. Is there going to be an opportunity to speak on the revenue resources?
Yes, there will shortly. Moving now to committee and regional reports, Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand you're going to take care of our report about Cascade, but I'm going to help Mary Lou Polly sitting to my left, very much here, but without a voice. So, she's given me a script to provide her reports for you. The King Conservation District report is, and I'm just going to read it for you, so I make sure I don't miss anything. Tonight during the special presentation from the King Conservation District, they have summarized the proposed program for work for 2015. The program was sent to the King County Council this summer. The expanded and new programs will be funded through a proposed rate increase from $5 per King County parcel to $10 per parcel, and the King County has referred this request to their budget committee, who will be reviewing it on November 17th. There will be a public hearing as part of this process, and during regular business tonight, Issaquah council members can consider a letter of support for the expanded program of work. There have been no meetings on the advisory committee since our last council meeting, and the next meeting is proposed for November 12th at 4:00 p.m. at the Shoreline Conference Center. Work will continue through 2015 to finalize the implementation plans, timelines, and benchmarks to be able to implement and evaluate the program's success in 2015. The next report regards the Issaquah Area Chamber Commerce. The October 23rd board meeting, Councilmember Polly, sitting to my left without a voice, attended the deputy city administrator with Emily Moon, the deputy city administrator. There was a discussion on the mayor's BNO tax proposal and outreach efforts by the city, and a discussion of current concerns related to increased traffic and issues around public safety and homelessness issues in Issaquah. The deputy city administrator provided some input at the meeting and will be following up on the BNO and public safety topics and the cities, ongoing city efforts. Chamber has issued a survey to its members on October 27th on the BNO proposal, and data has not yet been compiled and shared. The Chamber Executive Director provided a brief summary on Salmon Days wrap-up and was also reminded the board members about the Business Emergency Preparedness Event to be held in December with Puget Sound Energy, and an upcoming board retreat in November, and an after-hours members event on December 11th. And I happen to know this is at Blakely Hall in Issaquah Highlands where I work. In December, excuse me, in 2015, the board will continue with the State of the Community Forum in January, and with the school superintendent and Issaquah mayor and the chamber board reporting out to the members. Also, the chamber will be focusing on tourism and destination marketing plan as part of their 2015 program of work. And finally, just a short paragraph on East Side Fire and Rescue. Councilmember Polly attended a training session at the North Bend Training Center with Councilmember Barber and Deputy Chief Tryon, and observed EFR as five new recruits participating in some live drills, and when her voice was working earlier today, she said it was a lot of fun. Is there anything else, Mary Lou? All done. Thank you, Mayor.
And Councilmember March. I passed over Councilmember Polly because, Councilmember March.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Normally, we would have a land and shore committee meeting tomorrow in this chamber at 6:00 p.m. However, it's canceled. Evidently, we've solved all the land and shore issues in the city, so that's good news. And then, we have the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee meeting is next Wednesday, November 12th, at Redmond City Hall. And I'd like to point out, call councilmembers' attention to, the mayor was kind enough to send out an email this afternoon. Indeed, the nominations for the SCA appointments to regional boards and committees are due November 20th. These are important places where, of course, we can represent Issaquah's interests in the larger countywide institutions, and so I would encourage you to consider applying to those boards and committees, and if you have any questions about any of them, I would be happy to do my best to answer those questions. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Share?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The council infrastructure committee met on October 21st. On the agenda, we had a number of bills, the first of which was 6856, the Issaquah Highlands Shared Stormwater Agreement, which the committee recommended approval of to tonight's consent agenda. There was the addition of another clause into that agreement, but the agreement was otherwise approved by the committee. We also had Agenda Bill 6911, which is on tonight's regular business relating to the acquisition of the Bass and Bass Partnership Property, and that'll be discussed later on, as I mentioned, this evening during regular business. The committee recommended placing it on that for approval. We also had Agenda Bill 6890, which was a recology, AKA Cleanscapes, contract amendment. There is a small rate increase which will go towards funding for sustainability efforts. There will also be the possibility of utilizing that company for snowplow assistance come the wintertime and helping out the city public works operations where needed. We also had, and that's on tonight's consent agenda for approval as well, we also had Agenda Bill 6903 relating to a climate change commitment that's been signed by a number of jurisdictions. The committee had some discussion about the matrix of Issaquah's efforts that was included with the bill and all the good work that our city staff has been doing on the issue of climate change, and a request to share that information with other jurisdictions as well as learn from what other cities are doing on that topic. That was also recommended for approval to tonight's consent agenda. We had Agenda Bill 6914 relating to water quality grants. There are funds available for stormwater needs. Some are operational, some are capital. These are requests to apply for grants. The actual grants themselves would come back to the council for later approval. That was also recommended to tonight's consent calendar. Finally, the committee engaged in a discussion concerning the future of the Route 200 and transit in Issaquah. There is, as many folks know, a significant reduction in hours on the Route 200. Other routes that serve the city have actually been placed on the chopping block for potential cuts, and we talked about restructuring the Route 200 to make it more efficient, more productive. There is a limitation, however, on about 3,400 hours that Metro can allocate to that route, and we also talked with independent providers, we had Hope Link there, to talk about services that they provide, such as a dark contract that they've done previously. We've also talked about other options, smaller buses, private contracts. Basically, we're looking for additional input and public participation to talk about transit, give the committee some feedback so that we can make good policy on the subject. Where we directed is to take a look, for the staff to look at where there is existing service, find out what we need to do in areas where we need service and there isn't existing service, and then what options do we have for serving areas that are not covered by existing service. And then, this will come back to the committee for our December meeting, and again, there'll be opportunities for public participation. Our next committee meeting is November 20th, which is coming up here in just a few weeks, and then we already have our December date, which is December 2nd, which is a change in our regular meeting date to accommodate schedules for our consultants on concurrency, which will also be coming back in December. One other report to give, and that is the East Side Transportation Partnership Meeting, that's going to be coming up here on November 14th, which is prior to our next regular council meeting. We have a pretty full agenda. We have a 2014 Wash Dock Corridor Capacity Report from the State Department of Transportation, Sound Transit Long Range Planning and ST3 Information, and information about preparing for the 2015 legislative session. So, a very full agenda expected for the November 14th meeting, which will be held at the Redmond Silver Cloud Inn, not our usual Bellevue School District location, so if you plan to attend, make note of that. And one other thing on ETP, as the co-Vice Chair of ETP, I had the honor of attending a tour of the new 520 construction project, the new floating bridge, with elected officials from Redmond and Woodenville. It was a fabulous experience to get to see that work underway, to get to go out there on the bridge deck and actually see the outstanding men and women who are helping to put that major, major, critical road project together, which will serve the needs of the east side and the west side for many, many years to come. I think it's rated for 75-year lifespan, that project, and I have some wonderful pictures that I took, and I'm more than happy to share them with anyone who's interested in a little behind the scenes. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Mayor. Services and Safety Committee will be meeting this Thursday at 5:00 p.m. in the Eagle Room. There are four issues before us that evening. The first is to review the draft ordinance established in the Salary Commission. The second is Agenda Bill 6912, which is the 2014 budget amendments. We will be looking at the 2004 bonding refinancing, and the fourth issue would be Agenda Bill 6874, human service grant recommendation for the year 2015 through 16. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
No report.
Councilmember Winterstein?
So, whereas we heard tonight from Councilmember March that land and shore has solved all their land and shore problems, we, as a council and mayor and your staff, we still have work to do on the budget, so we're going to take your time slot tomorrow and have a budget meeting, a budget workshop meeting here tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. That concludes my report.
Thank you. There will be an executive session meeting held this evening to discuss property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110 per N1, closed per N B, and pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per N I. The item is expected to take 20 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session. At Cascade Board's meeting on 22nd, the board approved a number of amendments to consultant contracts for design and construction management related to activities at Lake Taps. We approved a construction contract for approximately $1.1 million for the reconstruction of the headgate associated with the diversion structure at White River, which was about $150,000 less than anticipated cost. We also had a brief presentation related to ongoing work at the Lake Taps-White River facilities that will continue into the winter. On October 30th, I attended the Sound Transit Long Range Plan Workshop. The purpose of that workshop was to review the status of the long-range plan update, to review a marked-up copy of that update that includes board decisions made since the 2005 Long Range Plan and Sound Transit 2, and to discuss possible long-range plan changes and process and schedule for updating the plan. There are two potential amendments to the plan that are of interest to Issaquah. One would be to extend light rail to the Issaquah Highlands, and the other would be a new route across Lake Samamish to Redmond and the Microsoft campus. Just a reminder that in observance of Veterans Day, the city offices will be closed on Tuesday, November the 11th, and Issaquah recently participated in a incident management team training that looked at the advanced application of the Incident Command System, which governs how we respond to major incidents. This is a major milestone in the three-year training and exercise plan that emergency management has developed to prepare our city in case of a major incident or disaster. And it was, the training was provided through funding from the Department of Homeland Security. There were 18 Issaquah staff, four Issaquah citizen volunteers, and two EFNR staff who participated in the training and passed the qualification test. Finally, I attended the Sound Cities Association Transportation Forum meeting on Friday, October 31st, where each jurisdiction discussed their priorities in four categories. The first, funding of regional priorities on state highways. Second, local funding needs for road sidewalks, bike lanes, and pedestrian access. Third, funding for increased local transit service. And finally, funding for regional transit, i.e. sound transit. The general consensus of all of the jurisdictions participating in that workshop was that a meaningful transportation package should be the result of the 2015 legislative session. With that, that includes the mayor's report. Moving now to the consent calendar, have the payables and payrolls for November been reviewed?
They have.
And... And with that, what is your pleasure on the consent calendar? Council President Winterstein?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to our public hearing, Agenda Bill 2015 Revenue Sources. Before I open the public hearing, we have a presentation by our Director of Finance, Diane Markot.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proposed revenue hearing tonight is one of the two required public hearings that the City of Issaquah is holding on the 2015 proposed budget. So tonight, we'll be going over the changes in the various revenue sources for the upcoming budget. And then again, on the November 17th meeting for the City of Issaquah Council, we'll be holding another hearing on the overall proposed 2015 budget. Starting out, you know, the largest fund that typically has the most interest in the City of Issaquah is our General Fund. That's where we provide a lot of our fundamental services, whether it's police, whether it's our planning department, our Parks and Recreation Program. Overall, when we look at the revenue forecast for the 2015 budget, we continue to be conservative in our forecast of our revenues. You'll be seeing later on, we're not seeing a lot of, currently, we're not seeing some, any significant increases in our sales tax revenue. So we continue to be conservative even in these times where the economy is beginning to grow. But as you're aware, there's still a lot of volatility in the marketplace. The General Fund Propose Revenues is a little over $38 million, it's $38,759,000. It is 2.9 million higher than 2014, due primarily to increases in taxes and permit fee revenue. As we've been working with the council on a number of the changes for the 2015 budget, you know in particular about 1.7 million is coming from revenue sources that have a corresponding directly-related expenditure. The total sources of General Fund revenue, as you can see, the General Fund is typically the one fund that is supported by taxes. For the City of Issaquah, our various sources of taxes represent 65%. And then we have these other smaller revenue sources with our licenses and permits being 10%. Shared revenue, which is our streamlined sales tax mitigation primarily, is 3%. Other charges for services, that is quite an assundry of various revenue options, whether it's things to do with our jail, our development services, our police department, our municipal court. So there are a lot of different operations in the City of Issaquah that have charges for services. Then we have our recreation fee, and then we have our jail fees, and then we just have a miscellaneous. Miscellaneous represents primarily interest income, and then income from some of our rental properties. The General Fund revenue by the taxes, you can see that sales tax represents 34%, utility taxes represents 19%, property is 31%, business and occupation is 15%, and then we have a very small category of 1%. So of the 65% that the City of Issaquah collects to support the General Fund, you can see that 65% of it comes from two primary categories, with remaining coming from our business and occupation tax, and then on businesses as well as our utilities. Looking at our sales tax for next year, we are starting to see a recovery. Our lowest year over a long history of time was during 2009, when the City of Issaquah, as well as most of the nation, was in a recession. Our sales tax collection for that year was 6.7 million. For, then we saw another drop in 2012. You can see revenues begin to grow in 2013. And then you can see that between 2013 and 2014, we're actually anticipating a slight decrease in our overall sales tax collection. For the General Fund, the property taxes, one of the primary purposes of the hearing is to have consideration on the changes in our property tax. The proposed budget includes a 1% increase in property tax revenue as compared to last year. What that really means is, is we collected a little, we collected about $7.5 million last year was our levy. You're only allowed to increase the revenue from one year to the next year by that 1%. So effectively, a 1% increase for the entire City of Issaquah represents $75,011 for the upcoming year. If you were to use an estimate of a house in Issaquah, and we use Zillow, the average is around $514,000. That 1% increase for a residential home would result in an increase in property taxes of It's really important for people to understand, even though their assessed valuation is going up, what we do is we look collectively at the City of Issaquah and the overall assessed valuation. So it's a combination of what is your assessed valuation, and how does it relate to the revenues you're collecting? So overall, revenues can only go up 1%, but if there's parcels going down by 10%, and another parcel goes up by 20%, then that overall 1% is reallocated based upon the percentage of total assessed valuation. So looking at property tax rate comparison, currently, we only have the 2014 data and information. The 2015 data is what currently is under consideration for this council. But looking at last year, for a typical business or a home in the City of Issaquah, our tax levy rate was $11.37. When you look at that distribution of the revenues, when people are sitting down like last week, because that's when the second property tax bill was due to King County, most people believe that when they write their check, the majority of the money is going to the City of Issaquah. As this graph demonstrates, the revenue really is dispersed to many different taxing districts. The largest one is to our public school system. 62% of every property tax dollar goes to support of schools. Now, that's broken out between funding from the State of Washington back to the local school district, as well as levies approved by citizens in the Issaquah School District. The City of Issaquah gets approximately $1.43 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. Of the total property tax bill, that represents about 12.6%. And then you can actually see that King County actually, when we, when an individual in Issaquah pays their property taxes, they're actually paying a greater percentage to King County versus the City of Issaquah. Then you can see the other taxi, what we call Junior Taxing District, the King County Flood Zone, the Port of Seattle, Emergency Medical Services, and the Library District. So that shows you collectively what that $11.37, how that property tax is allocated to the various jurisdictions. So changing that to what does a property tax bill look like? So overall, using 2014, if we had a house assessed at $514,000, their property tax bill would be about $5,800. So that check that they write, you know, in April and October, most of us, you can see that once again, about $3,600 of that total bill goes to the school district, $740 goes to the City of Issaquah. Of that $740, around $580 actually goes to what, to General Fund operations. The remaining difference goes for payment of voter-approved debt. Voter-approved debt is debt that the city has issued that the voters themselves have chosen to tax by a vote during some particular year. Like in 2013, we had a park bond levy that the citizens of Issaquah overwhelmingly approved. Once that bond is passed, then the citizens agree to tax themselves to repay the debt for the purposes of construction of parks and open space. So this just shows you how an average bill of assessed valuation of 514, how that bill is broken down. I always encourage people to look at their property tax bill when it comes in, because it really is telling how their, how far their money is going for the different municipal The composition of the levy rate, when you look at it from a different perspective, using the $11.38, nearly 38 cents of $1,000 assessed valuation, a little bit over half is assessed valuation that the local governments have legal authority to impose. So of the $11.37, 6.34 is that levy rate which the municipalities and their elected officials have imposed. But the remaining $5.04 is voter-approved levies, whether it's for the Library District, whether it's for the School District, whether it's for the EMS levy. So, you know, nearly, you know, you can almost say 50/50 is voter-approved levies, and the other remaining portion is that imposed by local government. The next fee that's in the proposed budget for next year is a technology fee. Currently, we have a fee for what we call an E-Plan surcharge. This is related to any new development activity. The fee is currently 1.3%. It is a pass-through. We collect the money, and then we pass the money through to EGOV, which is an alliance of municipalities that have formed in order to have electronic permitting and to increase efficiencies for the development community. Our fee from them is increasing next year greater than the 1.3%. And so in relationship to that, we are asking the council to consider, and over, from a 1.3%, we have Agenda Bill 6899, which proposes to revise the current fee, the E-Plan surcharge, to a technology fee and increase that to 5%. We would continue to make our payments to the EGOV Alliance, as well as have the ability to continue to implement, implement technology that would increase the efficiency of our development services operations. And that could be from things, from our building inspector having better mobile technology out in the field versus coming in in the morning and looking to see what types of inspections also gives us a better ability to deal with issues maybe in an area where we're already working. We can become more efficient by using enhanced technology to allow us to maybe answer a question out in the field while we're there. The fee is only on development-related services. It is not on any of the other activities in the General Fund. We also have a number, as we've shared with council during our budget workshops, we have a number of backlog projects that are related to technology, whether it is scanning some of our old, older documents. We currently spend a lot of time archiving and researching rather than having software to have the ability to call up information about previous developments, and also some enhancements to our permitting system. Then we would also use it to continue to find ways to streamline our processes so that we can continue to provide quick and timely services to our development community. We estimate the revenue in 2015, depending on the timing and the council's consideration, to be an additional $90,000 to $100,000. And in addition, the technology fee is supported by the Master Builders Association. The next proposed increase is our Business and Occupation Tax. In 2013, while we were in the process of developing the 2014 budget, the council asked us to do some research on our Business and Occupation Tax. During 2014, the mayor created an ad hoc committee that was formed in early 2014 to study this matter. The, it was composed of elected officials, which it was Mary Lou Polly and Eileen Barber and Bob Harrison, Keith Niven from Economic Development, Jen Davis Hayes from Economic Development, and myself. So we spent the early part of spring and into early summer looking at various options, collecting information from other governments that have a BNO tax, looking at other revenue options that other cities are imposing that we currently do not have in the City of Issaquah. And then we've sort of settled on looking at an increase to the BNO tax. The current rate has remained unchanged since 2004, when we formed the BNO tax. And so we wanted to look at what opportunities were there to look at changing the revenue and some of its structure. So the proposal would recommend increasing the exemptions for businesses that have annual revenues in excess of, currently, if you're a business and you make $20,000 or less, you have to file an annual return, but you're exempt from paying any additional taxes. We're proposing to increase that to $100,000. That would be approximately one-third of our businesses. What we found when we did some analysis, in many cases, those businesses are paying us $5 annually, or in some cases, they're paying us maybe $2 a quarter. When you look at the cost to the business of having them perhaps have an accounting firm, or somebody help them in the preparation of the return, as well as our cost of depositing and working with those customers, it was felt like the revenue loss was offset by the increased efficiency and the improvements to those small businesses. Currently, just to understand the scoping, we have about 5,000 registered businesses. Those include businesses both having brick, what we call bricks and mortar in the City of Issaquah, as well as those that come into our community to do work, whether that's a roofing company, a construction company. So those, everybody that does business with the City of Issaquah must have a business license as well as register their, and file at least an annual return, if not a quarterly return. The proposal would change our past practices. It would include taxation of certain nonprofit medical institutions. We have been meeting with them and explaining our proposal to those, those institutions that it would be applicable to. We also began to meet with the City of Issaquah Chamber of Commerce in around July, so we had many meetings with them, including the council members as well as additional staff, including Emily Moon, our Deputy City Administrator. So we had been meeting with them about five or six times, both individually, with groups, at various meetings. In addition, some of our other business outreach we did was in early September, we sent a letter to all of our registered businesses, including those outside of the city with no physical location. Our effort was to communicate openly and with transparency about the changes in the rate structure, so that everybody had that information. We also had some articles in the newspaper. We held two open houses to receive input from the business community on this proposed change. We're also, we have been and we're continuing to reach out to the large individual businesses that we believe will have a significant impact, explain to them what is going on, and some of the impact to their business. And we've been responding to any inquiries, whether it's through phone or emails, or just questions on the street, that I know some of the council members have been receiving about the changes, and then providing any clarification. The proposal recommends increasing the rates as of April 1st, 2015, excuse me, I missed that date, so it should be 2015 and not 2014. Retroactively wouldn't be something we would encourage. And so then when we look at the rates, currently, under the State of Washington, we have these six classifications. Those that have been around a while prior to the mid-1990s, we have about 40 cities in the State of Washington that has a BNO tax. The business community came to all of the businesses, as well as the State of Washington, and said, you know, if you're going to have a BNO tax, let's have some consistency amongst the various jurisdictions so that we don't have to learn all of the idios, the synchrons to each one of the taxing districts. So the cities all came together and created what they called the Model BNO Tax Act, and that is what these classifications represent. So we have the six classifications, manufacturing, wholesaling, retailing, printing and publishing, retail sales and services, and others. And throughout the 40 cities that have a BNO tax, they would have these same class And throughout the 40 cities that have a BNO tax, they would have these same classifications. Now, they all have different rates, they vary all over the board, but at a minimum, they all have the same classifications. As the schedule table lays out, our current rate for the first three categories is eighth one-hundredth of 1%. We're recommending that it goes up April 1st, 2015, to fifteen one-hundredths of 1%. And then a rate after January 1st to 2017, the rate proposed would be twenty one-hundredths of 1%. Now, the twenty one-hundred or .002 is the maximum allowed under state law. For our other three categories, printing and publishing, retail sales and services and others, they're at ten one-hundredths of 1%. The proposal is to take them to twelve one-hundredth of 1% January, April 1st, 2015, with no change with the 2017 proposed budget. So that would be the changes in the rate structure. For 2015, we're estimating that this increase in revenue is approximately $1 million to the general fund. That amount would increase in 2016 because it would be a full year of implementation. The other proposal is a parks and recreation fee. That would be a fee for those individuals or people using our parks and recreation system that do not live in the city of Issaquah. Currently, all participants participating in our programs pay the same fee. The majority of our programs is supported by property taxes, so those individuals or people participating in our program, since they don't pay property taxes, you know, we are using some of our property taxes to help support those programs. Currently, Bellevue, Kirkland, Mercer Island, Redmond, Renton, Auburn, and Samami's charge a non-resident fee for those people participating in their parks and recreation program. The average charge by these cities is 20%. Samami's charges a 50% for those people that are outside of their city using their rental facilities. Because we are, we already have some of our programs out, as brochures are out, we're estimating in the full year of implementation, the increase would be somewhere between $80,000 to $100,000. We're currently looking at some of our programs and will be coming back with some additional recommendations to the council. But overall, like our pool will not, we would not be increasing those fees. We have an arrangement with King County that goes back many years, and we need to charge the same rate, both for City of Issaquah residents as well as others in King County. As we indicated, it'd be a phased-in approach for 2015 because some of, some of our soccer programs and other basketball programs, those are already, that went out in our brochures for the next year. So, oh, one of our slide, our property tax levy, this just is, it got out of order. Just a comparison of our rates. Last year, our rate was around 1.2 for our regular property tax levy. We're estimating that the levy rate will go down to about $1.03 per 1,000. Part of that is, as a result of increased evaluation, the levy rate actually goes down. You can see that in 2013, our assessed valuation went down by 1.2%. You can see that the economy began to grow in 2014. The assessed valuation overall went up 8.6%. And in 2015, they're estimating that we should see a little over 20% increase in our overall assessed valuation. The other change in our overall revenue structure is to our enterprise funds. Overall, 97% of our enterprise fund revenue is generated from charges for services. So that is for our waters, storm water and wastewater operations. The city of Issaquah is not recommending any increases in rates for any of our three, of these three funds. However, King County Metro has a proposed rate increase of 5.6% for 2015. That is a pass-through to our customers. So what we do is we increase our, their portion of the bill related to Metro, and we'll increase it by the 5.6%, but we would hold all of our other rates constant from 2014. As you can see, the revenue for the water fund is estimated at a little over $6.7 million. The sewer is $7.7 million, and the storm water is $4.4 million. We now, as the council, is where we have about three D other funds, the overall revenues. There, besides just natural growth in revenues, we're not proposing any other rate increases to any of our other funds. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions before I open the public hearing? Council members share.
Thank you. I did just have a question. As I was looking at the agenda bill and the presentation, there was mention of the technology fee in your presentation, as well as the BNO. But this, and in fact, the bill itself, the alternatives, talked about maintaining the current EGOV fee and then the parks and rec fee. Those are all in the alternatives to the actual bill. But the recommendation and the proposed motion will be solely for the property tax increase. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. There are three agenda bills that cover those other, that are before the council, and you have had some discussion on those during budget workshops, as I've watched those proceedings from home.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh, for that comment. I was going to say the same thing, just for, it's more for everybody's benefit here, is Diane, thank you for that presentation, really covered four different major areas that we are considering: property tax, the BNO tax, the recreation fee, and the technology fee for development services. The only action we are considering tonight regards property taxes. That's it. Nothing on BNO or any of the areas is going to see any action tonight. We will be discussing them further tomorrow night, here in this, in this room, at our meeting at 7:00 PM. And any follow-up action requires individual agenda bills, which we have, and the action on those, including in the, the business and occupation tax, would be two weeks from tonight, on November 17th, at our regular council meeting. So I just want to make sure that's clear for everybody. The only action tonight regards, potentially regards, property tax. Though we will be listening to comments, welcome comments, on all of the matters that Diane presented this evening.
Are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, then, I will open the public hearing at 8:36, and remind those desiring to speak this evening that when recognized, please approach the microphone, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and your relationship to the city. And with that, I would suspect some have signed up, so I would ask the clerk to begin to call those who have signed up to speak this evening.
Sharon Appelt.
My name is Sharon Appelt, and I live at 1920 Fourth Avenue in Seattle. Mayor and members of the council, I, I'm the tax director for Dairy Gold, and we operate the dairy plant here on Front Street. And I'm coming to comment on the BNO, not so much the property tax. Would it be possible to have that one slide that shows the BNO rates? Because I thought it was an interesting slide. I represent Dairy Gold, which is the manufacturing subsidiary of Northwest Dairy Association. And we're a cooperative here in Washington State, the biggest cooperative. And we're owned 100% by dairy farmers in the Northwest and Montana, Oregon, Idaho. Our owners are family businesses. They run dairy farms. So I just want to give you some picture of what we're about. Dairy Gold came to Issaquah in 1952 and purchased a plant, a dairy processing plant. So it gives you an idea, this plant has been around for a long time and is quite, quite old. What do we make at this plant? We make culture products, which would include cottage cheese and sour cream, and we also make butter, consumer butter, which is what you find in grocery stores. And we make ingredient butter, which is 60-pound boxes, a butter that's shipped all around the country, and some internationally as well. We have approximately 120 employees at the plant, and many of them are union wage jobs. This increase in the BNO is very significant for this facility. I mean, just from the current rate to what's proposed for next year is almost doubling of the rate. And right now, that little plant pays over $200,000 in BNO. This would increase it to over $400,000. And that is significant for a business that has very low margins, particularly when you talk about bulk butter, it's a commodity. And I'm talking, I'm talking little percentages of margin. I'm not talking 10% or 15% or 20% margins. I mean, these are, these are well under 5%. And so every little notch you take out of the margin, you know, puts that plant more at risk for its operations. And, you know, you're seeing that other things are going up too. Metro King County is proposing increases in utilities and different things. We're paying all of those utilities. So what I request of you, and what Dairy Gold requests, is that you really consider strongly what impact this increase can have on an operation in your city. We prefer that there not be an increase. We recognize that Issaquah's rate has been lower than some other cities, and that made it more favorable to do business in. So maybe there's some options that can be considered. One of the things that really stood out for me, this rate for services looks to be lower than the rate for manufacturing. Is that, am I reading that right? Which is astounding. So CPA, which I am one, would pay less BNO than a manufacturer that makes boxes of butter? So think about that. That is counterintuitive. The state rate for service BNO is three to four times that of a manufacturing rate.
Forty-five seconds.
So please reconsider some of this. You might want to consider a favorable rate if product is manufactured in Issaquah and is shipped out of state. And so there are some other things that you can think about as well. So thank you for your time.
Matthew Bott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Matthew Bott. I work at 155 Northwest Gilman Boulevard here in Issaquah, and I'm here tonight to represent the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce. I'm again here to continue to urge your review of the proposed BNO tax increase within the 2015 budget as proposed. Three quick points I will make tonight, and I've made a few of these before, but the feedback that we've received from, from businesses in the community is that there should be continued review of expenses within the budget to reduce them and hopefully not have a BNO increase, or at least minimize what's been proposed. Number two, businesses would appreciate ensuring that there's a full understanding of the economic impacts of the proposed increase. You just heard about one today, and I think you'll hear some others. And where you can tie these increases, if needed, to economic development projects, initiatives, or plans going forward. The feedback we've received is really that the impact of a, or the magnitude of 150% increase over a two-year period is, especially for a business with high gross sales but low profit margins, is aggressive. It's very aggressive. So I think that's really getting out there and something we would urge your continued focus on. You know, the chamber really acknowledges the great work of the city, especially in the last few years. There's been a number of notable accomplishments that we wish to, to recognize in the scope of, you know, the city's work, the state park, the Central Issaquah Plan, the regional center designation, all the economic development work, the tourism focus, the high-performance organization work, the lean systems focus, ensuring Issaquah's presence in Olympia to help drive for infrastructure dollars, more infrastructure dollars. These are all very positive things, and we would urge you to continue to allow these efforts to mature, to support the local economic, economic base prior to instituting a tax increase of this nature. So thank you again for the opportunity. We want to, I do want to thank the, the staff of the city and the, and the members of the council and the mayor for the very open and transparent process this has been. It's been a great education for, I think, those in the chamber, those in the chamber board, and members of the community. So thank you for that, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Has anyone else?
Yes.
Mayor and council, Joe Heslett with Issaquah Press. First of all, I want to applaud your brilliant foresight and vision in having a lower tax increase for printing and publishing than other categories, and for righting the wrong of charging us more all these years. And I hope none of my comments or questions do anything to change that. But I did want to point out, as, as you might imagine, the press has been asked to consider offering opinion on the BNO tax. So I've delved into the budget a little bit, and I, I came up with some observations and some questions. I've noticed that the general fund over the last, since 2012, has grown at an average rate of about 7.1%. And this year, you're proposing an increase of about 6.7%. If you were to allow it to grow without increasing anything, the way it's grown organically, you should have more money than you're proposing at this point. And I'll save, I apologize in advance for some of the detailed nature of the rest of my questions, but I just wanted to go through some other line items that I had noticed. Sales tax has, on average, increased about 7.5% from 2012 to 2014, and yet you're budgeting it as flat for 2015. I appreciate the conservatism, but that seems like a bit of a stretch. Building permits have been, on average, 41.7% growth since 2012, and that seems to be even a robust surprise, that you'd only budgeted 2.2 million in 2014 and did about 3.5. So that's a 63% increase right there. So if you were to just take the 7.5% increase that sales tax has been growing and go back to a 20%, half of what the average is, increase in building permits, you'd have the 1.2 million you're proposing increasing the BNO tax in 2015. And the BNO tax has increased 7.8% over the last 2012, 2014, which would allow it to increase about $200,000 next year on its own, without any changes. So you also have increases in property tax of $400,000, increases in other fees of $500,000, increases in utility tax of $400,000, which is 1.3. It appears to me as though you have the potential to organically grow to the number you want without increasing the BNO tax. So those are my observations. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no others on my list.
Is there anyone who has not signed up desiring to speak? Yes, sir.
Lo and behold.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Art Jackson. I am with a small mom-and-pop operation called Costco Wholesale, and we thank you very much for the time to, to share some thoughts with you. I think it's important to state right off that we believe that as a corporate citizen, we have a responsibility to contribute to the health of all the communities where we do business. And paying our fair share of taxes is a part of that corporate responsibility. So I'm not here to say no to BNO, but if you don't want to do it, that's fine as well. But we strongly support those who have indicated that the BNO tax rate that has been proposed, an increase of about 150%, is two and a half times what retailers currently play, pay. an increase of about 150%, is two and a half times what retailers currently play, pay, creating a significant financial impact on our Issaquah warehouse location. We ask the council to continue to review all of the comments that are made and the proposed rate that is before you. The vast majority of our locations, our Costco wholesale locations, are not subject to a BNO tax. 76% of our locations are not subject to a tax, the BNO tax in the state of Washington. We have reviewed the BNO tax increase payments to Issaquah, and it appears that we have increased those payments from 3% to 5% annually based on our sales growth from the Issaquah location. These increases have well outpaced normal inflation. We operate our business, as has already been indicated by another party in the retail space, we operate on very thin margins, and the proposed tax increase would have a significant impact on the profitability of our Issaquah warehouse location. You asked when we met with you, and we appreciate that time, for some suggestions in terms of how do you do it? How do you go about it? First, we ask that you consider spreading the projected revenue needs across the entire tax base, retail, services, medical, manufacturing, and not obligate only a few businesses. That 30% that has been excluded should be a part of the solution. We also urge that you consider a more comprehensive study and analysis of all of the revenue streams that have already been mentioned here to determine whether or not the impact of the BNO tax on a few businesses is really necessary. Again, we urge that the increase be distributed across all businesses. We also suggest a reduced and delayed rate increase as follows. In 2015, the BNO rate would go from its current rate to .0010 effective April 1, 2015. And in November, review the results of that study, which I mentioned a bit earlier. Determine whether the increases that are on the horizon are really necessary, but base it on facts. Base it on study that you have done across all of those revenue streams. In 2016, guided by that projection and those studies, we suggest a BNO tax increase going from the .0010 to 0012 effective April 1 of 2016. Again, guided by the study, determine whether or not an increase thereafter is even necessary. The above schedule, which I have suggested raises the, realizes a 75% increase in the BNO tax rate over a three-year period. City revenue will actually increase at a higher rate just based on sales growth organically, as has already been mentioned. Again, we appreciate our obligation to pay our fair share. We believe that it should be a fair share across the board. I have copies of our position that I'd like to share with the council and available for any further follow-up as is necessary.
Thank you very, very much. Is there anyone else who has not signed up desiring to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Tony Wren with Evergreen Ford, Evergreen Lincoln, 1500 Eighteenth Avenue Northwest in Issaquah. I've learned a lot tonight. I'd forgotten, really, about the impact on Dairy Gold and the margins that you speak of. It hit me the same way it hits us as a small business, and compared to Dairy Gold and perhaps compared to Costco, we are a small business. But the increase proposed over the first year, if we're looking for $1 million net, the increase to Evergreen Ford alone is $80,000. The second proposal would take us to $200,000 in one more year. It's, the margins that we deal on, when you buy a car these days, when we are advertised on the internet across four states, we belong to, we just signed up for TrueCar, and if you know anything about, watched any football, there's TrueCar advertisements all over the TV now. This is how, the new way to buy a car. Well, we've known this for some time, that margins needed to be extremely low to bring volume up, which drives sales tax, which drives, the chart that I saw was 34% sales tax and 15% BNO tax was 49% of the general fund revenue. Well, those numbers won't increase if we can't compete on an internet basis and we have to drop our volume to raise our margin, it just automatically drops volume, and it'll drop sales tax and drop BNO tax at the same time. What we want to do is grow. I think, I think there's room for us to grow in this town. We can sell more. We can do more business. We can produce more income for the whole team, because we are one team. We are Issaquah. We really believe that at Evergreen, and I think you guys really know that. So I liked what I heard from Costco's proposal. We would certainly endorse that as a incremental increase, and please consider our plight. It's real. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening who has not had an opportunity? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak this evening? With that, I will close the public hearing at 8:55. And with that, open it up to the council for discussion, comments, or any action. And just as a reminder, we are not talking about the BNO tax or the technology or the parks at rec, but just the 1% property tax.
Actually, I'm going to ask for clarification. We can talk about all of those.
You can talk.
Our only action, and the only proposed action tonight is regarding the property tax.
That's right.
All right, thank you. So I want to do talk about the property tax, and I appreciate the presentation we had tonight. Now, unlike my colleague to the right, who's told me many times that she's understood property tax for well over 10 years, I'm just getting up to speed myself. Every budget season, I have to remind myself what's going on here. And there's a, I will say that there is a really good document available from our State Department of Revenue. And if you were just to kind of Google the question, more or less, about, tell me about Washington State property tax, there's a pretty good five-page FAQ. And, and, you know, what we're considering tonight, what's been proposed, is a 1% increase in our total collections. And one of the things that, and if people were listening very carefully, and I always found this kind of confusing as well, how can somebody's actual rate go down? And it truly can happen. It's the total amount of, that we can collect can not exceed a 1%. That's by state law on existing properties. That doesn't count for any new construction or enhanced property, enhanced properties. But yet, it's then, but then, there's also growth in valuation that happens by the assessed value of our properties. And some properties may actually decrease in their assessment. Others will grow at an average growth rate within the community. Others will grow at a higher rate. And so the actual net rate per property really varies based upon the actual growth or the assessed value, either increase or decrease. So all of this, so, you know, the only reason I go through this, I think it's a benefit of everybody to understand that it's a total collected amount. We know that in the budget for 2014, not starting until April 1st, the proposal for just the BNO itself would forecast to bring in 1 million extra dollars in revenue, just starting, just with that rate impact, starting on April 1st. For comparison, we're talking about a total collection amount increase of $75,000 across all property owners in Issaquah. So one of the messages I've heard again and again about, at least from our business community, those who pay BNO tax about, you know, we've heard the message, it's too steep of a rate, too fast of a change. I don't think that applies here at all to what we're talking about, property. And I think we saw some average numbers here, again, Diane presented showing that to an average. And averages, averages can be deceiving. There are, clearly, there are some on the BNO side of the calculation where their averages, where their actuals are much higher than the averages. But in this case, for an average home within Issaquah, we are talking about an increase in the payment to Issaquah, not in their total property tax bill, but to Issaquah of $5. So when I assess this for the impact to individual homes, for the part that we can control regarding property tax, I believe it to be a very modest increase. I think that the assessment that was offered tonight by the gentleman from the Issaquah Press, who, it's always interesting to look at numbers and trying to understand what actually happens. And I can't quote everything that we've learned about sales tax over the last few years, but the reasons for not expecting the same growth. I know one of the contributors to sales tax is construction, and we saw a bit of construction in 2014 that we're not going to see in 2015. So there are factors, well-known factors within the local economy that are the major drivers of sales tax. We have, we have some idea on that. But anyway, back to the, back to the property tax. So the amount is very modest, and the actual, when I look across the board at the growth and the number of citizens we have, the ability to maintain our service levels, but most importantly, I think, is the extra work we have in front of us for making investments and improving our infrastructure. Now, we're very, very modest improvements, increases in that in this particular budget, but it does take kind of a look at our, the whole system of revenues. We focused on a couple, as we saw tonight. There may be still some other opportunities, a more holistic study of revenue, you know, could bring into consideration. But on balance, when I consider what the city's operations, what it's completed over the last few years in maintaining, managing its expenses, and yet, there has been a growth in expenses, and, but there has not been a commensurate kind of, or unreasonable growth in kind of per capita spending. There has not been an unreasonable growth in kind of per-employee spending or total expenses and revenue. So I think, you know, there's a lot more to my overall assessment of the budget, but when I come down to the very modest increase of, on average, $5 per home, residential homeowner in Issaquah, I find that to be very reasonable and acceptable, and I'm going to support the potential action tonight on increasing the property tax rate as presented. And with that, I'm going to make a motion. And I'm going to move to direct the administration to prepare the necessary documents, both the ordinance and the resolution, setting the amount of taxes, property taxes, to be collected in 2015, amount to include a 1% base increase for adoption at the November 17, 2014 council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Additional discussion, council member share.
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking through the bill to understand why a property tax increase was necessary this year, and the answer seems to be in Section 1 of the resolution, which says, quote, "A substantial need due to the increases in the cost of providing city services." And that appears to be the only explanation in the bill. It's somewhat vague, I think it's actually really vague, about what city services and what is the substantial need. But to be fair, having reviewed city invoices before the meeting, as we all take turns doing, we can each attest that there are many necessary costs to operating Issaquah's government, both big and small. We also know that, as our city has grown, the necessary budget has grown proportionally, too. So the key question for me is whether this is the right tax increase at the right time. The council has carefully reviewed this issue on an annual basis, and when times were tough, no increase occurred. As economic recovery began, the implicit price deflator went up, and with a greater ability for homeowners to pay more for city services, the increase has reappeared. This year, however, we're in the process of discussing some significant taxes and fees. The garbage contract is going up, which we just approved on the consent calendar. King County has raised its sewer rates, which will be passed through to our residents. There might be a higher technology fee for development permits. There might be a larger impact fee due to concurrency adjustments, and we have the proposed rapid hike for BNO. I would also guess that if you are a member of the public and live in an HOA, or have health insurance, or cable, or power, or a telephone, those rates probably aren't going down either, perhaps not ever. So the property tax is just one more piece of real dollars that homeowners must pay. It's only a few dollars, but they're still real dollars, and they add up when you add all these various taxes and fees that we all pay. For tonight, I'm willing to approve the direction of preparation for the property tax ordinance at this time, because 1% could be defensible as part of an overall equitable funding plan. However, there is still another budget meeting tomorrow night, and I haven't yet committed to a final approval of this plan or the increase until we can assess whether a fair allocation of tax burdens on individuals and businesses exists for fiscal year 2015. So I'll support the motion to approve the preparation, and I believe this will be coming back to us in a couple weeks for further discussion, and we should know a little more at that time. Thank you.
Council member Marts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one of the things that's interesting when we talk about taxation is, I think probably everybody, you know, every parent thinks their child is above average, and I think every tax, every taxpayer thinks that they're in the top quartile of taxpayers. But the interesting thing is, when you actually look at aggregate tax loads in the states in the United States, there's some variation, but most states, if you look at the aggregate amount of money that the state and the county and the municipalities and the fire districts and whatnot, when they take in, compared to the aggregate incomes in the states, they all, not all, most of them fall between 9% and 11%. And there's, there's some southern states that are below 9%, and we all know California and New England are above it. But it's interesting, Washington is, of the West Coast states, actually the lowest. And, yeah, it's, Washington's at 9.4%. Idaho is at 9.5%. Oregon is at 10.1%. California is, as we all know, a little bit higher, 11.4%. So all this to say that states and counties, municipalities, all around the country generally have to provide a lot of the same things. They have to keep the roads paved. They have to provide fire services. They have to provide public safety. They have to provide parks, and this they all do. So the question before us, to me, is, we are, we're actually in the, we're in the lower half of states in terms of our tax burden. We're actually, more than half the states are above the aggregate tax burden we have compared to the rest of the nation. So I think that Diane has done a good job of showing where, for this particular proposal, and like others, I haven't, this is not to make any statement about BNO and where we want to go with BNO, but on property tax, I think that we have shown that we are fiscally prudent municipality within the competitive municipalities on the east side of King County. And so I say, as a state, we have a reasonable tax rate for the great services that we get, and we've shown that this would keep us firmly competitively in the pack with other municipalities on the east side, as folks look for where they want to have homes and businesses. And so for these reasons, I'll be supporting the measure before us tonight. Thank you.
Other discussion or comments? Other discussion or comments? Are you ready to vote to direct the administration to prepare the necessary documents or an ordinance and resolutions, setting the amount of property taxes to be collected in 2015, amount to include a 1% base increase for adoption at the November 17, 2014 council meeting? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Agenda Bill 6911, acquisition of Bass and Bass Partnership and Reed Family Investments LLC parcels on East Lake Samamish Parkway. This is coming back from the Infrastructure Committee. Councilmember share.
Thank you, Mayor. This Agenda Bill requests the city council to authorize the administration to proceed with the condemnation process of the Bass and Bass Partnership and Reed Family Investments LLC parcels on East Lake Samamish Parkway for the East Lake Samamish roadway widening project, if acquisition negotiations fail and condemnation becomes necessary. The acquisition of property from the partnership and investments is necessary to complete the road improvements along the parkway. The planned improvements include widening the existing roadway to accommodate an additional southbound lane, bike lane, curb, gutter, landscaping, street lighting, and sidewalk along the west side of the existing facility, along with associated stormwater and wetland mitigation. The city has received a grant for 2.4 million plus for construction, which needs to be obligated by May 1 of 2015. The city was authorized by WashDOT to begin the right-of-way process on September 24th of this year. We are required to follow WashDOT guidelines for right-of-way acquisition due to its use of state and federal funds on this project. If negotiations fail, then the city would need to invoke condemnation proceedings. The adoption of this proposed ordinance authorizes staff to move forward with condemnation proceedings, should it become necessary. The Infrastructure Committee met on the 21st to review this bill. We were briefed by staff regarding the process required for condemnation. Following discussion, the committee recommended approval of this proposed ordinance with one minor change added to section four by adding a date certain for when the authorization would become effective. The committee requested this item be placed under regular business for tonight's consideration. With that introduction, I would move to adopt ordinance number?
Two seven two one.
Two seven two one, providing for the condemnation appropriation taking and damaging of a fee interest in portions of certain parcels of real property within the city in order to construct East Lake Samamish Parkway southeast widening, and such other appurtenances and improvements as may be necessary to make the same consistent with city standards along the west side of East Lake Samamish Parkway from southeast 56th Street to southeast Issaquah Falls City Road, and providing that the entire cost thereof shall be paid from available funds, authorizing the administration to negotiate with the property owners for acquisition, authorizing attorneys retained by the city to prosecute the appropriate action and proceedings in the manner provided by law for such condemnation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Councilmember share.
Thank you. We've obviously heard from Mr. Bass on multiple occasions, both here at the council, and appreciate him taking the time to come to our committee as well. And, you know, from everything that I've heard, I, I haven't heard objections with respect to this bill, per se. You know, to be clear about what this bill does, it authorizes the potential for condemnation proceedings, but it gives the parties an opportunity to negotiate. And what the committee added was a trigger date of December 1st, by which time that authorization would vest. So, in other words, nothing can occur, even if it could occur, before December 1st. So, it gives the rest of this month, a sort of a grace period. I know Mr. Bass was going out of town for some time here at the end of the month and into early December, and, you know, I'm certainly hopeful that there can be fruitful negotiations and not a need for legal proceedings, but this bill gives the administration that authorization. And, and this is one of those times, I, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm very sensitive to private property rights, and this is a real tension here between the rights of a private property owner, one who has been in the city for a very long time, who's dedicated roadway to the city in the past, and those private property rights and ownership versus the, if you will, the needs of the many, and the city, that you could say, government with a big G, needing to improve traffic and do the necessary things on East Lake Samamish Parkway that we've committed to for many years in terms of improving flow around the north Issaquah roadway network. So, there's, there's a tension there, and that's where something has to give, because this project cannot be done without that additional right-of-way. And so, again, I'm hopeful that the parties can come to a fair negotiated resolution to this. But I support moving forward with this bill, because on balance, the, the tension, in my opinion, weighs in favor of giving the administration that authorization in the event those negotiations break down. We've committed, again, as a government with a big G, to doing this project, and we need to take this, this step in order to do that, however much it infringes on Mr. Bass's rights. And the, the Reed Partnership, who I haven't even heard from anybody, they haven't come to any meetings, so I take that as a tacit approval as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Josh, for summarizing so well our discussions during the infrastructure meetings, and we have discussed this a lot. And I just wanted to add to your comments and concur, because I did call this out as a concern as we went forward with our approval of the Costco Development Agreement, because it included the north Issaquah street improvement program. And at the time, I had said that I had trusted that our city would handle these other issues fairly that were not part of the Costco Development Agreement, so here they are before us officially. And I've learned a great deal about this in recent meetings, and the city and the parties involved have all been very forthcoming with information and in good intentions. One thing that gives me a great deal of confidence is that our parties are productively talking to one another by all accounts, and so that is good, and so I'm hopeful that this action will not be necessary. But it is required for us to give the city a tool, another tool, to complete this negotiation or this process. And one thing that makes it work for me is that this is just another tool to complete a process in allowing us to go forward with the street improvement program. And it's not necessarily something that should disadvantage the property owner. There are a lot of restrictions placed upon us as a city in, in this kind of authority. So, I'm hopeful that it would still come to an outcome that was in keeping with all parties' interests, but it would just be a different way of getting there. So, with that, I have support for this, and I'm glad that Councilmember Share added a date, so that there would be opportunity for the parties to work further towards an amicable agreement without taking this action. So, thank you for that.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number two seven two one, providing for the condemnation appropriation taking and damaging of a fee interest in portions of certain parcels of real property within the city in order to construct East Lake Samamish Parkway southeast widening, and such other appurtenances and improvement as may be necessary to make the same consistent with city standards along the west side of East Lake Samamish Parkway from southeast 56th Street to southeast Issaquah Falls City Road, and providing that the entire cost thereof shall be paid from available funds, authorizing the administration to negotiate with the property owners for acquisition, authorizing attorneys retained by the city to prosecute the appropriate action and proceedings in the manner provided by law for such condemnation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 6926, King Conservation District Proposed 2015 Work Plan, Work Program. I will look towards Council Milligan to speak on behalf of Councilor, Councilmember Polly.
Yeah, that would be me, and I might need a little coaching from, from you while we go forward. We heard a proposal earlier this evening, and I think what's before me is to make a motion, but I don't have any special language here, except a move to approve a letter of support for the King Conservation District Proposed 2015 Work Program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Additional, yes?
Thank you. Yes, we have the letter of support, but as I understand from Councilmember Polly, there's an additional, an amendment to add to the letter of support, and I'd like to read it here. The letter would say, or the addition would say, "While we support the five-year package including the per parcel rates and charges increase, we are concerned about the district's ability to quickly staff up sufficiently to effectively expend a dramatically increased budget. Therefore, we recommend that any unspent budget, particularly that in the first year, be allocated to the member jurisdiction grants program. This would be a responsible and effective way to manage this valuable public investment." And if I understand, where is writing? The rationale of this would be that the implementation, implementation in the first year, which would have the revenue increase, would require some time to implement the growth in their programs, and it's possible that the revenue would increase their costs, and I want to make sure that these costs would be conferred back to the jurisdictions from which they came. Is that correct? Thank you.
So, questions or discussion?
Actually, I do. So, what, what are we, what are we looking at? What, do we have a sample letter?
Send the Agenda Bill.
I, you know, I looked for that, I didn't see it. So, hold on, let me look again.
Eight seven.
Oh. I was looking for it at the end of the document. Okay.
I can take a crack at answering that, actually. So, we've drafted a letter, but there was a provision that Seattle had placed in their letter that I think is really important to include with Issaquah's letter of support, if that's where you want to go. It makes sure that even in this implementation year, if we collect a $10 rate, that we have a very effective and thoughtful way of spending it, if it's all not spent on implementation in the first year.
So, if I understood the motion correctly, the draft letter that is shown on page seven and eight of the packet would be modified as outlined in the addition that Councilmember Milligan added to the letter. So, if you approve the motion, the letter as amended here would be the letter that the mayor and council president would sign. Other Councilmember Marts? I saw your hand go up.
You did indeed, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's a shame that the SCA Pick meetings are not broadcast, because there's, there's, there's an ebb and flow there that, that a lot of us would recognize. And KCD came before SCA Pick, and the first time they came before Pick, there were a number of concerns raised on, on what they were looking to do. And KCD was really good about addressing those concerns and changing their request to, to address those, and also to provide supplemental reference materials for the Pick. So, then on the, the subsequent time was when the Pick voted to support this bill. So, I am enthusiastic and confident that they have been responding well to examination by the representative municipalities involved, and will be supporting this letter this evening.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of supporting the letter as outlined by Councilmember Milligan?
There's an amendment.
Hmm? Do you want to do an amendment?
Does the motion include the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of supporting the letter? Thank you. This is not easy this evening. All those in favor of supporting a, a letter in support of King County Conservation District, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to good of the order, does anyone have anything for good of the order this evening? Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to invite the community to the Issaquah Highlands Veterans Day event, which is on Veterans Day, November 11th, at 9:00 a.m., so it does not conflict with the city of Issaquah's wonderful ceremony that will be at 11:00 a.m. Ours is held at Village Green, which is right next door to Blakely Hall at 2550 Northeast Park Drive, and we are honored to have Mayor Butler join us on that morning, as well as Issaquah Highland resident officials, State Senator Mark Mullet, City Councilmember Stacy Goodman, and me, and we have other dignitaries who have promised to come join us. And we protect you from weather if, if you need it, but I'm sure that the sun is going to shine to honor our veterans. And that's, again, 9:00 a.m. Veterans Day in Issaquah Highlands, so I hope you'll come.
Thank you. Anything else for good of the order? Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, I'll be attending a donor scholar reception at Bellevue College, which is an annual event to honor the recipients of a number of scholarships that are given out at the college. And it's always a very moving event. We hear a lot of personal stories from the individuals and a lot of incredible success stories. And I've also joined the, the new alumni committee for the foundation as well. We're going to be doing a lot more outreach and taking a fairly broad definition of alumni to also include former students. So, anyone who has attended Bellevue College and even taken a class there could be somebody who would be interested in talking to and connecting, reconnecting back with the college as we look forward in about a year to the start of the college's 50th anniversary, and those festivities that will commence a little over a year from now, and hopefully the eventual expansion into the Issaquah Highlands as well. Thank you.
Anyone else for good of the order this evening? Councilmember Wintersheim.
Thank you. I really enjoyed the public comments we received tonight from the high school and middle school students, the year Sustainability ambassadors. It was a really good demonstration of, of, you know, leadership development, public speaking, and reminded me of, you know, the extreme dearth of crossover between our city government and our school district. It, you know, I think of things occupy our residents' minds, especially those with families that are in the public school district, and what's going on at school is just, is large. So, I really do appreciate them reaching out, you know, to us very deliberately. But I wanted to share one thing more, too, as well, is that along those same lines, I just want to let everybody know that, that the, the Issaquah Girls Cross Country Team qualified first out of their district for the state championship that's going to be running Pasco this Saturday, which is a tremendous accomplishment. They've got a, they, they beat Skyline by a lot. And, and I just thought, you know, let's give a little bit of high school news in here, because it was, it's a dedicated group of ladies and, and a coaching staff and a really excellent program, and I just wanted to share everybody, share with everybody. Yeah, I went to the meet, it was exciting, and just, you know, give them your moral support going forward. They have a decent chance of being very competitive in the state meet this weekend.
Great. Anything else for good of the order this evening? Seeing none, then, we will move into exec, executive session to discuss property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110 per N1, per NB, and pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1, per NI. It's expected that executive session will take 20 minutes. It's expected that executive session will take 20 minutes, and action is anticipated to follow in open session. So we are recessed to executive session.
All right.
There's one still out there.
Yeah, there is.
You know what I just learned?
Oops. There we go.
It is seven minutes after ten. We're out of executive session. I had announced that going in that action was anticipated. But at the conclusion, we are not taking any action on the items that we discussed in executive session. So with that, we are adjourned. So with that, we are adjourned.